Tribune, New Jersey, two filing advanced written notice of the meeting with the city clerk's office and three posting the notice on the public housing website during the meeting, participants, including members of the public may be muted by the host. However, there will be an opportunity for them to participate and speak in the public portion of the meeting where participants will be unmuted at their request. You want me to take a, uh, uh, roll call?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Mr. Caldwell?
Here.
Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunlap?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright, are you on yet? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Cepeda? And Commissioner Georgiani is not, and Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Pledge of allegiance, Chair?
Yes.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
The United States of America.
To the Republic, one nation, under God.
One nation, under God.
Limited, just a small liberty, just a small.
Okay, at this moment in time, what we'll do is I'm making an, uh, change to the agenda. We'll be moving up public comments. So, um, we have, I believe, some several individuals, um. John, each individual will have a total of five minutes, once again, five minutes and again, public comments. Um, not questions at this time, it's public comments. So, um.
If anyone has a comment, please raise your hand in the session and I'll recognize you.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we'll go into the regular meeting component. Okay, Chair, I will start with, uh, Danielle Colligan.
Uh, Daniel Coglan, thank you.
Hi, Daniel.
Hi, how you doing? Um, so I wanted to start by saying that I applaud the Housing Authority for having pushed back on the Russo development at the Sears side. Um, you know, a development site in New Brunswick. Um, I, I think that that was a really wise decision and I hope that you, uh, again, uh, this, uh, this, uh, you know, session, uh, take into account the idea that the Sears, uh, development may, uh, constitute um, an introduction of housing that is too, uh, too expensive for the average New Brunswick resident to purchase. Um, I'm proud to be a New Brunswick resident, uh, for these last 12 years. Um, and I'm excited to, it's a living in New Brunswick that serves all the people who live in it and doesn't necessarily bring in, um, you know, wealthy people, uh, with $700,000, uh, purchase prices on, on these, uh, on these for sale units. Um, so I hope that the, uh, that the, um, you know, that the board will consider again, either pushing back or requesting concessions from Russo in terms of the, uh, in terms of the development, um, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Daniel. Uh, next is Char- Charlie Cradaville. Hey, Charlie. Charlie? Oh, I can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, uh, good evening, members of the board, Charlie Cradaville. I'm a New Brunswick resident. I am a renter here, as you know, I'm a probably your favorite local reporter and, uh, also a, a community organizer here and I want to thank Commissioners Wright, Dunlap and you, Madam Chair, for declining to approve the developer uh, that wants to, to build at the old Sears site at your April 29th meeting. That was the right decision and I hope you will stand firm behind that decision today. I presume there's going to be a presentation and some more information and if this developer's not ready to include affordable housing in their proposal, then you should reject it. Um, I did have a couple of questions, so I want to ask you, Madam Chair, will there be an opportunity to ask those questions before you take a vote? Um, you know, for instance, after the presentation?
Well, what, right now, we're dealing with public comments, um, Mr. Cradaville, so, um, there probably will not be an opportunity to ask those questions before we take a vote, no.
Oh, okay, well, that's unfortunate, but I'll, I'll, I'll put them on the record and hopefully they'll be addressed in whatever presentation is made. I know, uh, Ed Russo spoke at your April 29th meeting and he mentioned that because they're not going to provide any affordable housing, they'll make a one-time payment in lieu of affordable housing. And he said that payment would be, quote, "in the millions." He could not give a specific figure, so I hope that he'll give a specific figure today and I'd like to know how many millions that payment will be. Uh, I've heard at some other government meetings that the payment will be only slightly above $1 million and I have, uh, you know, spoken to some experts on affordable housing and asked, you know, how many units could be built with that amount of money? And it's, uh, rather, you know, uh, s- small, rather, rather small, like five to 10, we're talking, you know, probably a single-digit number of units. Whereas when we're talking about this developer building 720 units, uh, they stand to make many tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars in profits over the course of the first 30 years of this development. So, you know, really breaking off a $1 million payment, uh, one time to the Housing Authority that'll build a small handful of units is a drop in the bucket, a real, uh, insult to the need for affordable housing here. So I would hope that someone on this board will ask them how many millions that payment will be. And I hope that someone on this board will ask them how many millions they expect to make in profit over the 30 years uh, of, of this development, um, because I think we'll learn from the answers to those questions just how pitiful what they have offered is. Um, but, you know, I, I hope that their presentation will reveal that they've changed their plans and they will include uh, a major set aside of units for affordable housing. If that's not the case, I encourage you all to vote against it. I don't want to belabor the point since many of you heard me speak at your April 29th meeting, but just for those of you who weren't there, we are living in a time when a third of New Brunswick is-
Mr. Cradaville, your time?
I'm sorry, what, what is the time limit?
Five minutes, Mr. Cradaville, five minutes.
That was five minutes? Oh, my goodness. Well, I, I've just, just closed by saying prices are spiraling out of control right now. We need you to live up to your mission. That mission is to assist eligible families by providing decent affordable housing as they move to achieve self-sufficiency. This project goes against your mission. Please vote no.
Okay, uh, it says Marge K. Marge? Marge? Yes, hi, Marge.
I'm Marge Kerber. I didn't realize my last name was not up there, but anyway, it's Kerber.
No problem.
I have been a resident of New Brunswick for over 25 years. I am presently a homeowner and I've been a homeowner for the last 20, 20-plus years, okay? Um, I am deeply concerned about this development going in at the Sears, where Sears used to be. Number one, no affordable housing. I mean, I, I, I just baffles me how you can continue to build these expensive places like the Aspire, okay? Where people have to have millions of dollars in order, in order to buy, um, or rent and, and, uh, you know, so how could a family afford that? You know, do you want families in New Brunswick? Or you just want rich people that spend all their time in New York or whatever and, and don't spend their time in New Brunswick? I don't, you know, I just don't understand why you would allow them to build this type of development here. You know, at least have affordable housing, like that, $1 million for affordable housing, I, I'm, I'm sorry. It just, um, it just bewilders me where this city is going. It, it really does. Um, you know, Mike, I, and I, I, I wasn't at the last meeting, I apologize for that, but, you know, there's no public transportation at the Sears, uh, uh, what about schools? Well, if that, that isn't, any families can afford to move in there. Um, I, I'm just astonished and I'm also astonished that you, you're still on this 30-year tax exempt. You know, no other town in, in, in New, in New Jersey does this. And, and there we are, time after time after time, giving these tax exemptions to these developers. Who's getting all this money? That's all I have. I, I urge you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Marge. Uh, Linda Stork? Linda? Linda? Is Linda there? Uh, Linda?
Okay, here we go.
Yes, we can hear you. Hi, Linda.
Okay, hi. So, uh, where was I? Well, I have to start over regardless. I also, uh, wanted to speak about the, um, the decision, which I also believe was the correct decision, um, to not okay the Russo development. It is, yeah, it is just astonishing to me that we would consider anything that didn't have an affordable, uh, an affordable component at least. You know, some percentage, we're not even talking long in, low income, we're talking affordable. So if it's 0% affordable, that means it's 100% unaffordable. Apparently, from speaking to residents who met, uh, with the developer in their neighborhood, um, the developer said they'd be, y- you know, th- they'd be happy to include unaffordable. They'd like to do affordable. Apparently, the affordable tenants, um, and I don't know about buyers, but they have, they have the best record. Because, yeah, common sense would tell you, if you make something affordable, people are more likely to be able to pay it, right? So, they, they said they would have loved to have that, but, uh, city didn't want it. Well, that is astonishing to me. How can the city not want it? Our housing is out of control, even for the kind of barely adequate housing that we have. Many times, families have to share an apartment. You know, um, of course, you can pack students in there and get the parents to, to pay. Because they're, they're comparing to having to pay, uh, you know, having to pay at Rutgers for room and board. But, yeah, it's just, it's just incredible, you know, for, for a family to try and do on their own. Um, and so, yeah, I would, I would be opposed to that. Um, and also, the ta- the tax abatement. And it's not even just 30 years. The, um, the senior citizens' building just got, um, a, a, a 30-year extension of their 30-year tax abatement. Like, why? What were they gonna do? Leave if they didn't get it? Come on, it's not, and it's not like they do such a great job over there. Like, you know, keeping the place up or, you know, probit- uh, COVID protocols and all that, yeah, no, I didn't see that. Um, I'm sorry, so, I mean, I don't know what, what, what we got for that, what was the trade-off? Another 30 years. Wow. So, um, yes, that's what I wanted to say. Please, um, do not approve.
Thank you, Linda. Uh, Josephine, there's no last name. Josephine, are you on? Josephine?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Hi.
Hi, uh, my name is Josephine Perez, um, and I used to be a resident, um, of, uh, New Brunswick and, um, also went to college at Rutgers University. And I just, I want to express, um, my anxiety, um, as a millennial, uh, that you guys are going to be raising housing prices to, to the amounts that you have stated. Um, I work over 40 hours a week and I s- still can't make that much money in two weeks. Um, so, if I, I would probably make that much money in the whole month, but then all of that money would be going to being able to afford the room that I, I live in. It's just not possible, like, a lot of millennials are not able to pay for these, these prices and with gas prices and food prices going up, like, I re- I already know people who have six people in a New Brunswick home or 10 people in a New Brunswick home just to afford to live in one room, one little space in the room. That, that's way too common in New Brunswick right now and if you're going to raise housing prices, I'm just really scared. I have, I'm, I'm really scared for, um, the people who, who, like, who live here and can't, m- might end up on the streets. You might have more homeless people. All the children from, like, Rutgers, all the students and everything, they're hoping to co- to live in a future and to integrate into the community and society. But if you raise these prices, there is no one who is going to afford these prices. I am so serious, like, um, it's just, it's not even possible for us millennials to be affording these high prices. Um, I really, uh- Like, be- if we have money to spend, but if we have to spend all that money to have one room and can't afford food or gas and, and how to get around, like, that, there's gonna create, like, lots of poverty in New Brunswick, lots of homelessness and there's just gonna be empty apartments, luxury apartments n- that are not gonna be occupied. And, uh, I just want to speak out as a millennial, as someone who has lived there, who knows so many people who live in houses with, like, a bunch of people in them, just to afford a room to please, like, make, make things affordable for us residents, please. Thank you.
Thanks, Josephine. Uh, we're on to David Horan. David Horan?
Uh, hello, hello. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Um, I'm going to just continue with the theme that has, has been going so far, that these apartments would be completely unaffordable. And I'm going to outline for you exactly how they're unaffordable. The median household income in New Brunswick is $43,936. This comes out to $3,660 monthly. Uh, that, the Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable rent as 30% of monthly income. Uh, 30% of 3,660 is $1,098. Taken from what was said at the previous meeting regarding this topic, the lowest price that I could find, um, floated for these apartments would be 16, $1,600 a month for a studio apartment. So right out the gate, the most affordable option is by definition unaffordable to the average New Brunswick resident. Okay, that is before, however, you add in the, uh, the cost of living. The census, um, puts this number for New Brunswick as $934 a month. Uh, this is things groceries, gasoline, et cetera, et cetera. Um, when you add that number to the $1,600 rent, you get $2,534. That is to say, the lowest, the cheapest apartment for this hypothetical development would cost more than 50% of the average New Brunswick residents' total income. Now, there's one final thing I would like to include. Uh, the average household size in New Brunswick, again, for the census, is three people. Russo Development has built, um, a similar, uh, construction in Union Township, right by Keene University. I will tell you the cost for their three-bedroom apartments outside of Keene University right now. $4,100 to $4,550 for a three-bedroom apartment. The average household size in this city is three people. Considering then the medium household income plus the median household size, quite literally, no one can afford this. It is more than 100% of the average resident's income, should they need a three-bedroom and significantly more affordable, should they only be seeking a studio apartment. Uh, that is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, David. Uh, Oscar Villar, Villar, also Chair, I just want to recognize that, uh, Commissioner Wright is here. Hi, Commissioner, I just wanted to let you know, we have you, uh, we have you in at 6:10 and welcome.
Just a reminder as well, too, we do have a lot of people with, um, with com- commenting. Once again, five minutes, please, five minutes.
Yes, all right. Oscar, are you on? Can you hear us?
Yes, yes. No, sorry, I just, uh, wanted to wait for everyone to finish speaking. It's, uh, it's VR, by the way, but either's fine. I, I peruse of mine.
Okay, you are, I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's, it's perfectly fine. It happens all the time. Uh, I would just like to start, um, just to, just reiterate some of the other sentiments that my peers have expressed. Um, first of all, being of course that, you know, I'm not so much happy, but I guess more so relieved that, uh, that the board last time around, um, voted no for the Russo development proposal. And again, if this board stands for anything, if this board, you know, cares about the residents of New Brunswick, I hope that you all will vote no this time around, too. Um, I'd also like to say, you know, despite, you know, not being a New Brunswick resident myself, I, in fact, I live right across on the other side of the road and, but I, I was born in this town. I was actually born in St. Peters myself and, you know, being a Rutgers student, I forgot to disclose that I'm currently studying at Rutgers University. You know, I spent the last year or so in, in the city, you know, getting to know not just like the general Rutgers area that's very much so gentrified by these kinds of projects, just the greater, broader New Brunswick community. Just getting to know that whole area in general has, you know, I, I've seen a lot and I definitely do stand in solidarity with, um, the residents of New Brunswick and of course, you know, it's, it's not just the residents of New Brunswick, but it's also the, you know, Rutgers students who are going to be heard by proposals like these, if, if they're going to be um, approved as well, because obviously, you know, students, they don't just have to worry about rising tuition, which of course, which I believe one of my other peers also expressed with, uh, you know, with rising gas prices and all that. The cost of living in general is just gonna go up and wages are going to stagnate. And, and the fact of the matter is, you know, we, we already have almost about a third, more than a third of that of all residents in New Brunswick are, are in poverty. Uh, so if I'm not mistaken, that comes out to about 20,000 residents in the entirety of New Brunswick and, and that, that's quite a scary number as well. So if, if a proposal like this does come through, then, then it's not just students who, who know, who, who might have to sacrifice, you know, being able to dorm on campus and being forced to, to commute instead, but it's, it's gonna be the people fresh out of college, fresh, you know, from studying in the area, but also just regular people as well. And I'm pretty sure as you're all aware, homelessness is, is a massive problem in New Brunswick as well. And, and that's just gonna, you know, keep on piling up if, if, you know, if, if we continue to just be blind to this issue and just let, you know, greedy, um, individuals, just greedy institutions like Russo developers, you know, get away with this kind of thing. I, I'm, I admire their persistence, really, I, I really do, but i- it's, it's hurting just regular people and to be so apathetic to those concerns and to just basic living needs, it's, it's quite sickening, really. Um, I'm almost done with my comment. I would just like to, to close with, uh, with this statistic, um, which I found quite fascinating. So, New Brunswick is in fact among the top 10 cities in this entire country with just absolutely extraordinary rising rate, since I believe this is from last year. The, the rent in New Brunswick has gone up by 36% and just to put that in perspective, the, the highest city on that list, which is Austin, Texas, is at 40%. So, we're not too far behind and I mean, N- New Brunswick, I mean, we're, we're not exactly the biggest city. I mean, we're, we're still pretty big, but we're, we're no New York or, or Philadelphia, so that, that's just to put things in perspective. We, we all should very much be concerned and I, I would even argue to accept we should be scared as well, because if, you know, first, it, it's gonna be people who are already poor and, and then it's gonna be college students and, and people, and, and people who are employed, middle-class people. It, it's, it's gonna come falling down. So, again, I urge the board to please vote no on this decision. Thank you for letting me speak and, uh, yeah, I'll pass it on to the next person.
Thanks, thanks, Oscar. Uh, Arlie Rubens? Arlie?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I do have some questions that I really wish I could have asked, uh, like, for example, the price ranges for the rental units. Without this information, it seems like it would be really difficult for the board to make an informed decision and to assess whether this proposal meets their mission to assist eligible families by providing decent and affordable housing. Uh, but in lieu of that, I do want to share a little of my own research I did to try to understand this proposal. Echoing David, the lowest-priced unit in this development is not only three times the median individual income in this city, but it's also significantly above the median income for the state. So, from not only an ethical but a practical standpoint, I'm really curious about, uh, who these housing units are meant for, especially considering this verbiage I'm seeing about, uh, redeveloping and revitalizing the area. If these units are inaccessible to the community, that tells me that they're meant to draw in people with means from other communities. And, uh, I'm a little concerned that that is the textbook definition of gentrification. Um, other practical concerns here, I read, uh, Mr. Dan Dominguez's comments in an article about these development plans, uh, where he said, "There would be absolutely no trouble at all filling up these housing units because in this highly desirable area of New Jersey, there is more demand for apartments than supply." I did some digging and while this might be true for, uh, units that are reasonably priced, this is not true at all for apartments in this area priced similarly to the proposal. They actually have very high vacancy rates and not just very high, uh, but some units in town, uh, particularly one similar to the proposed townhouse model, has a vacancy rate of 6%, which is double the vacancy rate for the state of New Jersey. So I'm also not sure that this project is filling any real demand in the area. I, I yield my time. Thank you.
Oh, okay, uh, thanks, Arlie. Uh, Rusty Flores, Rusty?
Yes, hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Rusty.
Awesome, thank you. So hello, my name is Rusty Flores. I've now lived in the state of New Brunswick for 31 years. Um, and first, I want to thank the board for voting no the first time around. I think it's really important that we acknowledge everything that Arlie just said, because she took some of the points that I wanted to bring up. Um, my, I had some questions and it's a shame that I can't ask them prior to the vote. But what I do want to say is that I hope you really do take into consideration that we are slowly gentrifying New Brunswick and we are seeing it with the population that is currently living in the city and the population that is forced to leave the city. Um, building these housing is just gonna increase that flight mentality that a lot of people are currently starting to develop in the city and it's only gonna encourage more people to leave the city. So, I encourage you, I ask you and I beg you, please vote no. Um, and please make sure that you're conscious of what you're about to vote on before you vote, um, but please vote no. Take everything you know into mind, listen to us today. We're the people of the city and we're talking to you, so please listen to us when we say vote no. So thank you and I yield the rest of my time.
Okay, uh, next is Amber Saravia. Did I say that right, Amber? Amber, you on?
Yeah.
Hi, Amber.
Hi, how you guys doing? Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, this project proposal completely demesses the needs of the people in New Brunswick. Um, this one tax exempt is one, you know, super low, but where exactly would that money go towards, you know? We want to make sure that we're helping and uplifting the public and I, you know, I am worried that this money wouldn't not actually go back to the public. Um, another worry that I have is the impact on traffic flow. You know, a lot of people, I'm sure, within these communities would bring cars and we already have a lot of traffic issues within the city of New Brunswick. We do not need more cars and we need to figure out, you know, how to actually solve that issue. We don't need to add to the issue. Um, another big point is, you know, I'm sure some of these people will be bringing kids and so our school district already has a high population and so bringing more children into the school district will, you know, lower successful rates of education and cause more issues for the school districts. Um, so I do ask the board to take in consideration all of our points. We really need to make sure that we're taking care of the city of New Brunswick, the community in Brunswick and not just the developers who want to come in and make profit off of our space. Um, and just to reiterate, you know, Charlie's point, the NBHA's mission is to assess eligible families by providing decent affordable housing as they move to achieve self-sufficiency. And so I completely, um, believe that this project would not provide a space for families to grow and to thrive in the city of New Brunswick. We deserve better and, uh, I really hope that you guys, uh, take our points into consideration. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Amber. Uh, Julian Munoz, Munoz?
Oh, hello.
Hi, Julian.
Hi, I'm a student here at, uh, uh, or I actually am formerly a student. I'm a renter here in New Brunswick. Um, currently living with three other people. Uh, and then on the second floor, there is four other individuals who are also students at Rutgers. Um, and let's be honest, like, this proposal is definitionally gentrification as, you know, many before me have stated. And, you know, while I applaud the, the decision to, to reject the proposal initially, um, that needs to happen again, because not only are you gonna be pitting students against uh, the, the working-class residents of New Brunswick, but now you're introducing a new of, you know, higher income bracket of people who are gonna be competing with students for housing as well. And, yeah, so please vote no and I yield my time.
Thanks, Julian. Savannah? Is it Simkus? Simkus? Savannah?
Hi.
Hi, Savannah.
Yes, hi. Um, my name is Savannah. I've been a resident-
Um, my name is Savannah. I've been a resident of New Brunswick, a renting resident for about four years. I work full time. Um, I am twenty five. Um, and I did go to school at Rutgers, but I am not a student. So I currently live in um the Tove Manor area, so we're actually right by the where they would like to build those. Apartment complexes. I've seen my rent go up. And before it went up, it was already having an impact. As someone who is single, living in an apartment. Working full time, it's already hard to make rent. And then with it risen, it's even harder to make rent. There are bills that you have to pay. There is everything on top of that. There's food, groceries, gas, inflation, everything like that. I know that everybody else out there is feeling it as well, especially in this area, especially in this area specifically. Our apartment complex is mostly single people and families, people with pets. And. It just is not, it's not right, you know, it's not. It is, you know, it feels like adding, oh, like adding a lot of, you know, gentrified space to. This area when more money can be put into affordable housing and more money needs to be put into affordable housing. And I just, I urge you guys to, again, vote no, um, because a lot of people will be affected by this. Um, and I yield my time.
Thanks, Savannah. Uh, Brian, is it Rake or Rack, Brian?
Yeah, um, hi, my name is Brian Rack. I'm I'm really kind of surprised that you would even consider building a housing development right now with no affordable housing. I mean, since we got through COVID, that's been the huge, huge uh factor for everyone. I mean, rents are going up. Availability is going down, developers are buying properties and just converting them to massively expensive housing complexes. I think I think it's kind of crazy that someone can get denied an application and then just come back later. And have it voted on again. I mean, if he doesn't get it this time, is he just gonna come back in another two years? Like, I don't understand that. If there's really going to be a thirty year tax exemption, who's gonna pay for the schooling for all the students that live here? Is that just gonna fall on the other taxpayers in New Brunswick? Or is just no one with children gonna be able to live here? And then just a final point, I'm I'm kind of shocked to see a a public hearing like this where the public comment comes before the presentation. So there's no actual ability to like ask meaningful questions about the presentation. That's all I had, thanks.
Okay, uh, Jascomar? Vargad, Jasmar?
Jascomar?
Jascomar, yes, I'm sorry, Jascomar. Go ahead.
Hello, I am Jascomar Gregot and I am here to encourage the members of this board to vote no. I want to thank those that spoke before me for the insightful comments regarding affordability. However, I want to oppose this development for a different reason. I'm sure that everyone here who lives in New Brunswick is aware of the increase in crime over the recent years. Many blame this on COVID, but there's a large body of evidence that gentrification like what would be caused by this luxury housing development leads to more crime. There are many reasons that cause violence to arise, but one significant is what sociologists call relative deprivation. In other words, how poor residents of a city see themselves in comparison to their peers. Criminologist Yan Lee conducted a study of urban gentrification. One of her findings is that increased gentrification leads to higher murder rates and property crime in the short term. So to bring in these prospective wealthy residents and not introduce affordable housing for those struggling to get by would not only be a betrayal to this community. But one with potentially failed consequences. Are you on my time? Thank you.
Thanks, Jascomar. And then I think the uh we have one comment from, is it Jess K?
Yes, hello. Um, my name is Jessica Cradaville and I wanted to thank the board for initially denying this application. Um, affordable housing is more important than ever. Uh, I think that Jascomar's comments were very insightful and that lack of economic opportunity for people does lead to higher crime rates. I think that's um been studied and proven on more than one occasion. And think that the board would really be letting down those residents. Um, that have lived in New Brunswick for a long time and are struggling and are looking for affordable places to live. And to greenlight a building of seven hundred units that are completely and utterly unaffordable. Not, oh, we can stretch and I can afford to live there. Absolutely out of reach for the average person is devastating. Um, one figure that hasn't been brought up that I have in front of me is the number of free meals served by the Elish's Promise Soup Kitchen. Have tripled since the end of two thousand nineteen. So in November twenty nineteen. Uh, just over nine thousand meals were served in November of twenty twenty, twenty one thousand meals were served. And in November twenty twenty one, thirty two thousand one hundred and fifty eight meals were served in the month of November alone. It shows you that the cost of living in New Brunswick is already exceeding what people are able to afford. If they need to seek out a free meal at the soup kitchen. I urge you to please take all of these previous comments as well as mine very seriously. Because the cost of living for the people of New Brunswick should be your greatest concern as the housing authority. Uh, I'm gonna yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, uh. Is it, uh, D C colon, did you already speak?
Oh, yes, I did, I'm sorry.
Oh, you did, okay, that's right, you raised your hand again, okay. All right, Albert Valari? Albert?
Albert, you're muted.
Uh, you want me to see if I can unmute you, Albert? Uh, can I do that? Ask to unmute?
All right, can you hear me?
There you go, yes, we can, Albert, hi.
All right, my name is Albert Valeri. I uh, I've lived in uh New New Brunswick for over thirty years. Uh, actually, I could have been what better prepared since I only found out about this last night when I checked my email. But uh, you know, that that property is is right along Route One. And uh, it's probably an ideal property for a business, like a big box store, a grocery store or something like that. But for housing units, especially expensive ones like that. I remember uh, working on some camp, political campaigns and I was the the Route Eighteen. Uh, the uh projects over there and I remember how noisy it was there because of the highway. I mean, the noise was definitely and and also the pollution on 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 days when the wind was blowing certain way. And I thought, I'm thinking, why would anybody want to live next to Route One? I certainly wouldn't. I don't care how cheap the apartments were, although these apartments are premium, you know. Uh, and and they're they're like, people who will will, you know, who's who understand these environmental concerns. Will think twice about wanting to live next to a highway like Route One. And also, do we really need more gentrification in New Brunswick? What I really don't like about this is the fact that we're not just, it's not just apartments. They're they're gentrifying, gentrifying apartments there, but you're gonna give them this huge, you know, giveaway of a tax abatement. And in New Brunswick, we have probably the highest uh percentage of tax abated. Or exempt properties. It's, last I checked, it was fifty four percent of properties, over half the properties in New Brunswick are tax abated. You know, as a taxpayer and a homeowner here in New Brunswick, I know that I'm making up that cost. Those people who who pay taxes here, even the renters who have to pay higher rent, we're making this up. Fifty four percent of all of the properties are tax abated or tax exempt. I, now we're building again and another big giveaway. And these apartments, who's gonna afford them? And then, like I said, there's those environmental concerns. I wouldn't want to live next to Route One. I yield my time, thank you.
Thanks, Albert. Uh, Mr. Russo, Ms. Kofi, your hands are up. Are you separate from the presentation? Do you want to comment?
Yes, I'd uh, I'd like to make make a few comments just to respond to to some of the comments that were made, which um. Certainly, you know, respect and appreciate everybody's comments about project. Um, and I promise I'll I'll keep my promise, uh, comments brief and I'm sure Kate's gonna wanna um chime in as well. But first and foremost, I I want to speak directly to the 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 questions and comments about why no affordable housing. There's there's a very simple reason for that. It is not economically feasible to build affordable housing on this site, given the economic realities of the project. And the governing body, the mayor and council, very carefully evaluated what should be built on this site. Over the course of the last six to nine months, when they were going through the redevelopment plan adoption process. And they came to the conclusion that, given the constraints of the site, the fact that the site's been sitting vacant for the better part of two years. Um, the improvements that we're being required to make in order to build something that meets the city's standards. That addresses some infrastructure um requirements that are needed in the vicinity of this property. There's a, there's a single family residential neighborhood that the property abuts. That many of the residents there have been staring at a vacant Sears department store and a vacant Sears auto center building for many years. There are improvements that um, they they have requested along the perimeter of the site, which we've agreed to make as part of our project. So, and uh Linda, I forget your last name, did say that, um, you know, we did talk about affordable housing in our in our community outreach meeting. And and the person that made the comment about we love building affordable housing because affordable residents tend to be some of the best residents that we have. Because they um, they know it's difficult to get affordable housing, it's hard to qualify, they don't want to lose the affordable housing. You know, I was the person who personally made that comment, so I can I can speak directly to what I was responding to. We have built, our company has built affordable housing throughout the state of New Jersey. But it has to be built in places where it's economically feasible. Here, this project, it's absolutely not economically feasible. And one of the projects that was, you know, referred to where, um, I think somebody mentioned our project in Union Township, where we do have affordable housing adjacent to King University. That affordable housing was only built because the township wrote a seven million dollar, made a seven million dollar investment in our project to subsidize the cost of the housing that was built there. New Brunswick with the affordable housing stock that it has. Um, you know, is not prepared to do that and was very clear in its planning efforts for this site. It chose zoning the property for a development that would result in new revenue for the city. And to be specific about that, right now, this property generates about a couple hundred thousand dollars a year in city revenue. With the financial agreement and the tax abatement that was approved by the city council. The estimated revenue in the first year that the project is fully completed to the city is over one and a half million dollars per year. More than what the property generates today. So, and over the thirty year term of the pilot, the estimated revenue is over seventy million dollars in additional revenue. Because the rate that we have to pay under our financial agreement increases over the thirty year term. So the city of New Brunswick, the governing body, is the body that decides where affordable housing should be built in the city. If it's gonna be built, how it's gonna be paid for, how is it gonna be subsidized? The decision not to require affordable housing on this property was made by the city. This body, sole um decision that's before it tonight is whether or not our company. Is qualified as a redeveloper for the site, that the, and and Kate, and I'm sure John Hoffman can speak to this in in better detail than I can. But this, the the housing authority is not responsible for determining should affordable housing built or shouldn't it be built? What should be built on the property? Should it be housing? Should it be big box commercial? Um, that is absolutely not what the housing authority is responsible for. That's a city responsibility. Um, but notwithstanding that, there is a very important reason why the city has zoned the property the way it has. It approved the financial agreement that it did. It's because it spent months and months and months. Reviewing the planning characteristics of the site, reviewing the economic specifics and realities of our project. And they came to the conclusion that the only way that this site would be redeveloped and not continue to sit vacant. For years and years, as it has done for the last couple of years, is for them to zone it that the way they did. Um, we are making a payment to the housing authority and that lar- that was largely a result of. The last meeting that we had before the authority, some of the comments that were made then, some of the requests that came to us directly from the city. And I think it's important to note and put on the record that this would represent the first time that the housing authority has ever collected a payment. From a redeveloper um for a project like this, as a matter of fact.
Mr. Russo, I'm sorry, you're at your, you're at your time limit for the public comment period, but I I I'm sorry.
Can he tell us how much? Can he tell us how much the payment's gonna be?
I believe it'll actually be a presentation, but unfortunately, we have a, we have a five minute time limit. I'm sure we'll have it that in the presentation.
Okay, I can.
If that's okay. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, but just because we have a five minute time period for all speakers and we keep, we we do have to keep that, keep that. Uh, uh, thank you. Uh, Kate Kofi, did you want to comment or are you gonna be doing it in the in the presentation side?
Hi, hi, Mr. Clark. I I'll I'll wait till we're in the presentation and then I'll do my comment.
All right, uh. Chair, I think that's it.
Yes, that's it.
Yep.
Okay.
You want to go into the regular meeting?
Yes, we're going to the um, actually move on to the presentation.
Uh, do you want to go down the agenda of the presentation or you want to do consideration for the minutes real quick?
Let's um, do the consideration for the minutes and then down to the presentation, please.
So the uh minutes for the May meeting, Chair, it's consideration. You need a motion and a second or any comments or revisions for the board?
Okay, I need a motion. I need a motion for consideration.
Move. I'm sorry, who seconded?
Dunlap.
Dunlap, thank you, Commissioner. Ready for the vote, Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunlap?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Chair?
Yes.
Okay, uh, shall I jump into the resolutions, Chair?
Yes, jump in.
Uh, Resolution Acting as Redevelopment Authority is a resolution approving RTF NB Urban Renewal LLC. As redeveloper for the property known as Block Seven One Zero, Lot Seven Point O Two, Seven Point O Three and Seven Point O Four. And Block Seven Oh Seven Dot Oh One and Lot Thirty Five Point One Three on the New Brunswick tax map. For construction of a residential commercial project located at the Sears redevelopment plan area. Need a motion and a second and then we have special counsel to to introduce. So moved, Dale?
Second.
Second was Dunlap?
House.
Sorry?
You're good.
You're, I'm sorry, go ahead. Uh, we have John Hoffman, Special Counsel, John?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much and good evening. I think before we begin, I should discuss, I should discuss the role of the housing authority. You're acting here as a redevelopment agency and that's your role, not as a housing authority, but as a redevelopment agency. The the property, the decennia has decided to have a redevelopment plan for this property. They set forth the criteria for the redevelopment plan. What would be included in the redevelopment area, which is a mixed use? Your role is to determine whether this application complies with that plan. And whether this applicant has the financial ability and the experience to build the plan. That's the role acting as the redevelopment agency. As far as tax abatement goes, that's a, that's a decision of the city council and not this agency. So I just wanted to clarify that before before we started. Your role is to determine, under the plan, does this concept plan and this plan comply with the redevelopment plan? To does this developer have the experience and also the financial wherewithal to complete the plan? So the application. So the application before you tonight is both for RT, RTF NB Urban Renewal to be the redeveloper and to approve a redevelopment agreement. I'll just briefly go over the properties, the Sears property around one approximately 32 acres. The project is a mixed-use project consisting of apartments, townhouses, retail, a potential grocery store, and a potential drive-through. The there was a discussion as to low and moderate income housing. Mr. Russo will speak to that, but the Housing Authority has established a nonprofit corporation called the New Brunswick Affordable Housing, which any contribution made by the developer will go to that, into that entity and be controlled by the housing, by the by the redevelopment agency for use for low and moderate housing, whether it's construction of new and low and moderate housing or the improvement of existing housing to permit people to live in low and moderate housing. The application before you is for the mixed use. The redevelopment agreement is the typical redevelopment agreement, requires the redeveloper to pay all your expenses, the administration fee, the ordinance fee to the town, to the town, which is about a hundred thousand dollars. The agreement is guaranteed by the developer's parent. In addition to the usual, there's a good faith effort to to have people who who live in low and moderate housing do the construction. There's a provision here that requires certain parts of the construction to be done by trades, being the retail and some of the some of the residential. The construction we've done in phases is anticipated to begin in November of 2023, complete by December of 2030, 2027. The project cost is estimated to be $207 million in all its phases. We have the typical provisions requiring them to have insurance and also identifying the Housing Authority for for any 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 suits that may be bought against the authority. We have the usual covenants against discrimination and requiring the site to be used only for the permitted uses. The provision with regard to mortgages. And we have the provision that they cannot assign any part of this project without your consent. We have the usual default provisions, the representations by the developer. In the event they do default, your 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 role would be to to make that, to to reject them as being the redeveloper. That would only be if they would default through the future. And I'm here to answer any of the questions before, if not, I'll turn over to Kate Coffey and Russo to make their presentation.
Uh, Mr. Russo or Kate?
And I'll I'll start us off. Good evening, everybody. And and Mr. Hoffman, thank you for that introduction and thank you to everybody for your comments. I think I'll I'll just take a minute to talk about the redevelopment processes. Mr. Hoffman indicated the redevelopment process has a lot of different strands to it in order to facilitate a redevelopment. So the the council and the planning board put the redevelopment plan together. And then the council determines whether or not a pilot, meaning a payment in lieu of taxes, are appropriate for a project. And the Housing Authority is acting as the redevelopment agency in this instance. And the redevelopment agency's question before it is whether Russo is a qualified redeveloper and whether it's going to develop the project in conformity with the redevelopment plan that has been designed by the council and adopted by the council by ordinance. The redevelopment plan has already been adopted. And so now the question is whether Russo is capable and committed to implementing that redevelopment plan as has been adopted by the council. So a lot of the the comments that we've heard this evening about the different components of the redevelopment plan and what folks in town wish was included in the redevelopment plan is really a question that would should have been before the council. Whereas the agency's determination now is is Russo capable of building that plan? And will they build the plan as as it's currently reads and and comply with that? So when we were here before you, I think it was two months ago, we did do a presentation as to the qualifications of the applicant with respect to redevelopment and their experience in other redevelopments throughout the state and capabilities with regard to this project. Mr. Russo, it might be helpful to just, I don't know that we need to go word for word through it again, but just to do a recap of some of your experience elsewhere in the state and your ability to accomplish this project, please.
Sure. We um, we we've, our our company has been in business for close to 55 years. You know, we are, you know, we're a family business. There was a comment before made about, you know, greedy institutions, which, you know, that's that's certainly not us, right? We've, my father started our business in the late 1960s. And, you know, my sister and I and other family members, you know, became involved 20, 25 years ago. We've built, we're 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 not simply focused on building building housing. A big part of our business is building commercial buildings, industrial buildings, data centers. We've built office buildings over the years. And really, on on, you know, we're very much a local company. We do do a fair amount of development, you know, for a company our size, but it's all in a small geographic area. We're based out of northern New Jersey in Carlstadt, which is a few minutes away from the MetLife Sports Complex. And all of our projects are about within an hour or so radius of of our office. So we're very much locally minded. More recently, in the last six to seven to eight years, we have built a fair amount of housing throughout Bergen, Hudson, Essex, Passaic Counties. We have not built in New Brunswick before, but we've built in nearby communities, including Woodbridge. We've built and successfully completed projects of this size and and projects substantially larger. And, you know, we, you know, we, as Kate said, we didn't prepare a detailed presentation beyond what we presented last time. We were before the board where we went through our site plan and we explained some of the, you know, the different components of the project and we shared some renderings. But, you know, I did want to take a few more minutes and respond to a couple of the other comments. You know, some of them really just factual, you know, you know, there was a comment made about no public transportation. We do intend to run a shuttle from the site to downtown New Brunswick. We know that having, you know, transit to the downtown is important. And that's something that we've we've committed to providing. It was something that the the governing body felt was important, and it's something that we're we're certainly going to do. You know, there were the comments that were made about gentrification. We understand that, like everything else in our world today, you know, housing prices just keep going up and up and up. And it's 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 concerning for us too as developers. It's very difficult to finance and to build projects like this today. And I think you're going to find in the future that the pace of development and the amount of development, regardless of what property type it is, is is going to slow. We're we're in a in an interesting time, you know, economically. And we feel confident that we can still execute this project because we're we're very long-term minded. We're not building this with the intent to build it and sell it. And, you know, our our, you know, the apartments that we're planning here, our goal is to to build a quality project and hopefully have it, you know, for a long period of time. We, the the contribution that we've agreed to make to the Housing Authority, which John Hoffman touched on, the the Housing Authority had to set up an entity to receive a contribution from us because it hadn't been required or done in the past. And we're contributing $1,080,000. It's unprecedented within in the within the city. Again, this is the first project that's made a payment in lieu. We have made payment in lieu in other communities, which is why it's something that we presented and we offered, even though it was not a requirement of the governing body. When it when it adopted the redevelopment plan for the site back in February, the economic realities of the project were well documented in our financial app agreement application, which the governing body recently reviewed and and voted on. So I would just ask, you know, the commissioners and also, you know, the members of the public that commented to to understand that even though there is no affordable housing being built on site, there is no reason why this project cannot provide the impetus at the city's discretion, because the decision lies with them, to use part of the revenue, right? I commented over 1.5 million a year in additional revenue to promote additional affordable housing throughout the city. And I think the city has done that in the past, and there's no reason why they can't use the the ratable creation that this project will will generate to do the same thing.
Mr. Russo, can you please talk about the the actual sales price of the market rate of properties?
I'm I'm sorry, sir, this isn't a public comment period time. I'm sorry. So this is a presentation? So go ahead, Mr. Russo, I'm sorry.
I mean, I can I can comment on the the apartments. You know, we, you know, we anticipate that the rents for this project would be comparable to some of the other communities in the New Brunswick downtown. There's a project just up the street from us on Route One on the former AMC site called The Edge that recently opened that, you know, you can look and see, we we do the same thing. We look at surrounding communities to see what the rents are. And that's how what guides our assumptions on rents. Somebody mentioned our project in Union Township, which, even though it's a different community, it has sort of a similar, you know, it's it's, you know, I think that the style of development and the the size of the units are similar, so that could be a comparable. Even though King University is a little bit smaller than Rutgers, it also has a little bit of a university connection. We do have a number of students and faculty members that live in that project. So, you know, I think there's a fair amount of data out there on the, you know, to support our-
The median rent in Union is 1,200. A studio in Union in Vermilla, Union costs $1,900. So even if you are using median rents as you're guiding, you overcharge.
Sure, go ahead, Chair.
Excuse me, this is not the time for comments or questions. Mr. Russo, continue.
Okay, the the last point that I'll make is we're we're not eliminating any housing as part of this project. So we're certainly not going to affect the affordability of housing in New Brunswick because we're not displacing any housing. Right now, the site, other than the two restaurants, the schoolhands and the on-the-borders that are located along Route One, the site's completely vacant. So I just wanted to make sure that that's, I wasn't sure if that was clear to everybody that commented, that there is currently no housing on the property. We are not replacing affordable housing with market-rate housing or displacing single-family homes. That's, I think, a, you know, an important thing to to consider.
And Mr. Russo, I'm sorry, Mr. Russo, I was just going to add that in addition to the housing that we are proposing, that's that's new, we're also proposing some commercial space, including one retail building and one building that's being designed with a grocer in mind. You know, there was a public comment about the site being well-suited to a grocer, and that's exactly who you're hoping to attract, correct?
That's an excellent point. The city did require in its redevelopment plan that a, you know, a small format grocer, 20,000 to 25,000 square feet, be included in the plan, which we did. We have about 20,000 square feet of inline retail space in the ground level of the proposed apartment buildings and one small, you know, retail pad between the two existing restaurants on Route One. So there's there's, you know, a small parcel of vacant parking currently between those two restaurants that can accommodate, you know, call it a, you know, a Panera-sized, you know, three to 4,000 square foot retail building. So we are, you know, even though the bulk of the project is housing, there there is, you know, a meaningful commercial component to it as well.
And each of those components are prescribed by the redevelopment plan. And and we are, you are intending to provide them in accordance with the redevelopment plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, is that all, Mr. Russo?
Um, yes. And again, we appreciate your time and consideration. And again, we we appreciate, you know, everybody's comments, except for the comment about us being greedy, which I can assure you is not the case. And, you know, we want to, we want to do the right thing and we want to build a nice project for the community. But we we appreciate your time and and, you know, we hope that you'll vote that we are qualified to execute this project so that the process can advance.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Ms. Coffey, anything else?
No, Madam Chair. We're happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Just respectfully, Madam Chair, I was told that there would be a certain amount of the payment in lieu of affordable.
Excuse me, Mr. Crowderbell.
Did I miss that information?
Excuse me, Mr. Crowderbell. Thank you. At this point in time, I would ask that you just not jump in without letting me finish him. Mr. Crowderbell, is that understood?
I apologize.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Coffey, you had indicated that you would take some questions at this time. You had indicated that.
Yes, ma'am. If the commissioners have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, but come from commissioners. Thank you very much, Ms. Coffey. Again, the commissioners, do you at this point in time have any questions?
I have a question regarding the changes that was mentioned. I see that they haven't been implemented. There has not been an alteration or change as far as the low-income, medium-housing, affordable housing. That's my main concern with something building, a new building going up in New Brunswick. We heard the comments today, but these were mentioned last time during that meeting. And Mr. Russo spoke and Ms. Coffey is open to more conversation. Priority to me, with a good conscience, is to make things affordable at this day and time for residents, that lifetime residents or students that live here, is to enjoy a better livelihood. But that's not being catered or that's not being reached out. It's not being made available. And that's something I have a problem with as a board of commissioner member here in New Brunswick. Ms. Coffey, any changes, any alterations?
So, respectfully, no, sir. So the the council is the the entity that has control over the redevelopment plan. And the council has determined that it is not interested in including an affordable housing component in this redevelopment plan. As you know, when we were here before you two months ago, we we did indicate that we were willing to make an affordable housing contribution. And we went back to the city and and cemented that offer. And it's now included in the pilot agreement, which was approved by the council. But the council has come up with this redevelopment plan and has excluded affordable housing from it. And we, as redeveloper, are required, if we were to be designated as redeveloper, our task is to implement the redevelopment plan as the council has prepared it. And so, so no, we are, we are not able to amend the redevelopment plan on our own, and we have not done so, other than to attempt to address the concern that this board has articulated by making arrangements for the payment in lieu of affordable housing.
Thank you, Ms. Coffey.
I'm I'm sorry. If I could just respond to the Commissioner Walsh, just very briefly.
Okay, Mr. Russo.
I do, I'm sorry, I'll keep it very brief. I I I do believe that, and I don't want to emphasize this again, that the 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 city administration and the governing body recognizes that the economic realities of the project, it's been vacant several years. The amount of the redevelopment of the site will generate a very substantial ratable, and that ratable can certainly be used to not only reduce taxes throughout New Brunswick, but to foster affordable housing in a manner which many other communities are doing now. And that's in a 100% affordable housing developments or mixed-income projects where the the municipality or the city in this case, because they are eligible for low-income tax credits and other sources of funding that private developers sometimes aren't eligible for, they can use revenue that comes from projects like this that are substantial and use a portion of that additional revenue to advance policies throughout the city. And if the creation of affordable housing or the rehabilitation of affordable housing units is a city policy, this project will certainly help advance that. I don't think anybody believes or can argue that a property like this, that's underutilized, that's vacant, that represents a very small ratable of what it could generate, is serving the community in any way. And that, I think, is, you know, what the governing body, you know, recognized when it did what it did, when it adopted the redevelopment plan, that we are doing our best to to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Any other questions from the commissioners? You go, you go.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Uh, I, I, I was kind of concerned about two comments. One was, uh, I think Mr. Russo says that the city doesn't want any affordable housing or, uh, the governing body, and Ms. Coffee repeated that, even though they might have been willing, to add affordable housing to these units, you know, based on her statement. And the other concern I had is, I think, both Mr. Russo and Mr. Hoffman said that our board is not responsible for determining whether a project could have affordable housing or, uh, in the, in the project, okay? But are, are they saying that we just have to approve whatever the governing body has given us? Is that what we, you know, you're saying? Because, uh, I have some, we have some experience here. There were projects which came in without any affordable housing, and we required them to have some affordable units, and they were willing to do that. So that contradicts, uh, Mr. Hoffman's and Mr. Russo's statements. So I just want to be clear. Uh, but the, the question I have for Mr. Russo is, uh, can you explain how that your project would not be feasible, uh, if you have, if, if you add, let's say, ten units of affordable units?
Um, even a small number of affordable housing units has a meaningful impact on the economic viability of the project. And, you know, we, um, if, if you look at the projects that, um, have been built recently in similar communities, y- you will find that without, um, meaningful subsidy, projects like this, um, are rarely built with an affordable housing set aside. Um, certainly with the way costs are today, which over the course of the last three months, six months, nine months, costs are, have continued to increase. And we, if, if we could get subsidized to build affordable housing, as I alluded to before, we've had great success with affordable housing units and other projects that we built. But those projects tend to be, you know, for example, um, surface parked, wood frame construction, you know, in areas where land costs are much less, site improvement costs, infrastructure costs are much less. This project, because of the cost to remediate the site, demolish the existing improvements, extend all the infrastructure improvements throughout the site that are needed, what construction costs are today, what borrowing costs are today, it's not feasible. I mean, we, we, even with the financial agreement that we have with the city, um, this is a very difficult project to build, just given, you know, the economic market that we're in. So, um, if we weren't making a contribution in lieu of building housing, you know, you know, a small number of affordable housing units that economically had the same impact, um, you know, is something that would be feasible, but the city was very clear in its instruction to us. The, um, priority number one was getting this site redeveloped. The site's been vacant for a long period of time. The city wanted to see it redeveloped, and they wanted to see it redeveloped with the uses and at the density that they felt were appropriate. And based on that, um, those requirements, um, you know, the city decided that onsite affordable housing was not, um, um, you know, going to be required, um, but a payment in lieu would be.
Uh, by the way, the, the, the place was vacant for the last, I think, two and a half years, not for a long time, just to give you some information.
Okay, Commissioner. Okay, if there aren't, are there any other further questions from the commissioners? Okay, John?
Ready, Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Walde?
Abstain.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Approve.
Uh, Commissioner Donglap?
Reject, abstain.
Was that a no or an abstention, Commissioner?
No, no, I don't agree with it.
Okay, Commissioner Wright?
Same.
And Chair?
Uh, yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. Ready for the other items?
Yes.
All right. Uh, with, uh, resolution number twenty-two is a resolution ratifying, authorizing, and approving the payment of bills for the month of May twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Second was, Commissioner Wallace, hi, I'm sorry. Ready, Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
On the, on the bills. Uh, Commissioner Donglap?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Chair?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number twenty-three is a resolution ratifying, authorizing, and approving the write-offs of certain rent in the total amount of fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and zero cents deemed to be uncollected by the staff and personnel of the Housing Authority of the City of New Brunswick.
Need a, uh, motion?
Yeah, a motion and a second, Chair.
You need a motion and a second?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
So Chair, as you know, uh, these are write-offs of individuals who have either expired, been evicted, or no longer live here, have moved out. This does not mean that the Housing Authority does not continue to attempt to collect, uh, monies. Uh, uh, obviously not for the people who may have expired, uh, but it is required annually for our fiscal year, uh, end, uh, by June thirtieth in order to write these off, and then we're able to then move them off our books, which we still attempt to collect with our staff and collection component.
Okay.
Ready for vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Approve.
Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Donglap?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Chair?
Yes.
And that's all I had, John.
Okay. All right. Okay, um.
You need a motion and a second?
Yes, get a motion, please.
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Donglap?
Yes.
Commissioner Walde?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
And Chair?
Yes.
Okay. Have a good night, everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night. Be well, everybody.
I just want to confirm the vote failed, correct?